Good evening, everybody. At this point, we'll call the Tuesday, March 19th, 2013 meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. Join us in an invocation, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for an opportunity to come to you in prayer, and we thank you for an opportunity again to serve your people. We thank you for those in attendance. We thank you for this scout troop that's with us here tonight. We pray you'll bless these young men, that they'll grow up to be our future leaders, and your hand will be upon them, and you would give them wisdom. Be with our troops around the world and keep them from harm. We ask you. We pray for our president, our congress, our governor, our legislatures. We pray for our city council and our school boards, and this board and our staff as well, that you would give us wisdom. We would please you and govern wisely. We ask you in the name of your son. Amen. This evening, we're gonna have the posting of the colors, and that's gonna be performed by Boy Scout Troop 603, and they're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and they're from Bethlehem United Methodist Church located at 607 Bethlehem Road, Statesville. And at this time, I'm gonna let Commissioner Robertson recognize the individual scout leaders and the scouts who are in attendance this evening. Mr. Robertson?
Okay. Leading the Boy Scouts in Troop 603 is Senior Patrol Leader Timothy Stafford. The scouts who are joining him tonight are Trevor Johnson, Brody Cufall, Zachary Tolleson, Colby Clower, Jacob Lambert, Colin Lewis, and Austin McCurdy. And for every scout troop, there are always adult scout leaders that are required to volunteer to make it happen, and we sure appreciate them being here. And they are led by Scout Master Kimmy Lambert and Assistant Scout Masters Robert Goforth and Scott Johnson. We appreciate y'all doing this.
Okay. A few gentlemen will come forward and post the colors and lead us in the pledge.
[inaudible]
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 Before they're seated, let's give these young men a round of applause. Mr. Smith, do you or the staff have any adjustments to this agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one adjustment I'd like to make. I'd like to add an item under closed session, under personnel. And this will be under General Statute Reference 143-31811A6. That's the only adjustment I would propose.
Are there any adjustments from any member of the board this evening?
I have an item under new business.
Also had an item under new business. And I have one as well. Anybody else? All right. Not hearing that, floor's open for a motion that we approve this agenda as amended.
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Griffith to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, public hearings will move immediately to administrative matters, and Mr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first two items, we have Joey Roskowski from the Planning Department is gonna present both of these, and they are both requests for public hearings for potential releases of jurisdiction.
Your first request tonight is a request for release of jurisdiction from, excuse me, one second while I, of course, deal with, there we go, release of jurisdiction from Alcove Road Langtree Properties LLC. This property is located on Alcove Road between Templeton Road and Edgeway Road. The proposed use of the property, which would be under the town of Mooresville's jurisdiction if released, is a mixture of educational, institutional, residential, office, and retail uses. The town of Mooresville has entertained their request for annexation already, and will consider annexation for this property in June of 2013, but they've already approved for water and sewer extension at their February 4th, 2013 meeting. As you know, we have dealt with this area of the county recently, as recent as Langtree Charter Academy with their request for additional impervious surface allocation for that property, as well as Schumacher Home Site, which was a rezoning request. And just a bit of background information, from my perspective, we did work with the applicant in asking for master planning for this area and this site. However, it was abundantly clear to us that the applicant was pursuing densities of development that could potentially require water and sewer. So we began having conversations with them about potentially seeking that release of jurisdiction into the town of Mooresville to support their development. However, at this point, I'm not aware of any master plans that they've developed, and we are not aware of the exact densities, especially regarding residential development. We're not aware of those densities. As you see in the staff report, we have reported that most of the schools in this area are nearing or at capacity for future enrollment. And what I would also like, as part of this, either tonight or in between now and the public hearing, is just to understand from the board, kind of refresh what was, I believe, a quasi-policy of the board at one point, where you were not really entertaining the residential releases due to school system capacity issues, and you were just letting those requests for annexation within or into the municipalities kind of run their course. And this is one of my first that I've brought to you, even though I've been here almost two years, that's how slow development's been. But I would like a little bit better understanding and maybe some guidance from the board that will allow me and staff to better, better serve folks with future requests for release of jurisdiction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Roskowski?
My understanding from reading the memo is that Mooresville plans to annex this area as of June?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, this is a practical matter. Why is this being brought to us if they're going to annex it in a few months anyway? Does it really make any difference what this board does?
Sure. And I can see your point to a degree, but also realize that this is an opportunity for the board to take a position, at least with understanding what residential densities are coming to the fringes of our municipalities, and it gives you a chance to weigh in, especially given school capacity issues. It gives you a chance to weigh in on whether or not you support additional residential development in these areas. So I would look at it as an opportunity to keep you informed and also to weigh in, as you have in the past.
I'll say this is a policy. Anytime anybody builds a charter school next to their development, I'm in favor of it. Okay? And that's a good deal for us, you know? You wanna build a subdivision, build a charter school. That works. Just, as far as the matter of a preliminary meeting or under administrative matters such as this, I'm pretty sure I'm correct, Mr. Smith. This actually came to be as a result of a motion made by former Commissioner Godfrey Williams, who wanted people in the area to be aware of these things, so we would call for a public hearing, and they would have an opportunity to be input. I believe that's where that came from.
I think you're right, yes.
And the board adopted that as a policy as a result.
Very good. That helps me as well, so thank you.
Do you know the anticipated enrollment of the academy? What the building site will facilitate?
Langtree Charter, I believe, was around 1,200 enrollment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Again, the request is to call for a public hearing. The floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. You have a second request for release of jurisdiction, again, into the town of Mooresville for the Sullivan Property. This is located on Charlotte Highway, just south of the intersection with Cornelius Road. Many of you are probably familiar. This is already developed with several businesses on the property, and they have had significant well issues in the past with two failed wells, and the town of Mooresville has agreed to extend water to the property. However, they do not intend to annex the property at this time. However, in order to extend the water, they are requiring at least a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town. Again, this will be another public hearing request for April 2nd.
Any questions? Not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman? Okay. I believe I heard Renee first, so there's the motion by Commissioner Griffith for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item, C, is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number 26, and this will be presented by Rick Dowdell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board. Tonight, we're bringing before you to ask that we move $32,000 from our seized funds for construction of a range, a foreign range that we're gonna need. This is gonna serve a dual purpose. One is for our training academy, that will need a state dedicated, we have to have a dedicated range for the state, and also to qualify our officers that we've issued our rifles to.
Will the Mitchell BLET class be able to use this facility?
We've not been approached by that, but, you know, therefore, we'd be open if they would need to use it, because it's gonna be for government use only.
Say again?
It's gonna be for government use only, and, you know, if, but we've not been approached by them to do that yet.
Do you know what the plans of the other law enforcement agencies in the county are, since the?
I do not. I have not conferred with any of them to see what they're gonna do once the FOP range closes. I do not know.
I'm inclined to be in favor, but if we're gonna, but what I don't wanna do is everybody have to, you know, you get a range, and all of a sudden, State's wants a range, Mooresville wants a range, Trauma wants, everybody's gonna want a range, you know? If we're gonna use public dollars for a range, then whatever they were paying the FOP if they were using their range, that'd be okay, I guess, to, you know, to ask them for that, to contribute to that, but...
That makes sense.
Seems like we should be able to share that.
I talked to, I actually run into Mr. Kidd by accident. He said he would, my understanding is he's willing to do a lot of the rough grading and so forth at his expense.
That's great. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item D is a request from the Fire Marshal's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number 28, and Misty Sherrill is here to make that request.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me come tonight. We're here to request that you approve the Amendment Number 28 to appropriate grant funds for the Firefighters for Children's Fund Grant that we got permission to apply for this past December, and we were awarded that grant, so we just need permission now to appropriate those funds.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I'd like to make a comment. I'd just like to say what a great job they did on the fire bowl for the fourth graders of the county, the Fire Marshal's Department and the Fire Department did a fabulous, fabulous job.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Sherrill? Not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 28.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Griffith to approve Budget Amendment Number 28. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item E is a request from the Health Department for an exception to current financial accounting procedures in order to allow them to apply for grants throughout the year, and Susan Johnson, our interim health director, is here. We would have business cards printed up for interim health directors. It'd be common.
At the last Board of Health meeting, it came up in our discussion that we oftentimes miss out on applying for grants, because according to county finance account, county finance accounting procedures, we must request approval prior to requesting or applying for a grant. And oftentimes, we receive these grant announcements, and they have a very short turnaround period. And by the time we take them to our board, that only meets every other month, and then get the request here, we've oftentimes missed out on the grant request. So tonight, we are requesting to be given an ongoing exception to the current county finance accounting procedures, so that we can apply for public health-related grants throughout the year as they become available. This exception will not apply to grants that require matching funds from the county. And we would, this would allow us, this approval or of this exception would allow us, on grant applications, to be able to answer yes to the question, have your boards approved this application? We could answer yes to that, and that would improve our chances of being considered for the grant. When we do approve or apply for the grant, we will send a copy to the finance office, and then, once we're notified that we've been approved for the grant, we would come before this board to request approval to accept the grant and allocate funds.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Johnson?
Well, this, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you'd said that you would not apply if they required matching grants. Suppose it's not matching, it's two to one, or a flat amount or something? I mean, is there, and where I'm getting at is, you know, if y'all are applying for a $100,000 grant that requires a $1,000 county match, I mean, clearly, we don't want you to miss out on that opportunity. If it's a $100,000 grant, and it's gonna be a $40,000 or $50,000 match, well, that's not so, you know, that's not a layup.
Right.
Okay? That's a little bit more difficult. So, or if it's a grant that you would normally fund through your normal budget process, and it's been budgeted, then, again, I just don't see a problem. I don't know, you know, if we need to add any other wording to it, or if we can just state that our intent is to give you the freedom to go for it, we just wanna make sure that we're not obligating ourselves to huge amounts of money for programs that indeed are optional.
Do you feel like it would be appropriate for us, in those cases where it might not be a match, but like you said, maybe a flat amount, for us to ask for guidance from the finance office as to the limit?
No, just, I would say just notify, so if it's gonna require county funds that have not been budgeted.
Okay.
Is that fair enough? Are y'all good with that?
I assume, I think, you know, if you served on the Board of Health, if they had a grant that was for $50,000, and it was a 10% local match, and they could come up with that money out of Medicaid max without tapping into county revenues, then you would be willing to give them the authority to do something like that.
Right.
I didn't see a downside to that. Can you, Mr. Smith?
I don't. I think between Susan and myself, you know, if we get that information, if we had any questions, we could definitely poll the board, or at least have an idea that what's gonna be reasonable or not.
Okay. All right. I don't really have a problem with the request, with that understanding, but I don't think we have that many of those cases. I served on that board non-consecutively for a little over 13 years, and I can only remember maybe half a dozen times or something that that sort of thing came up. I remember a few times when the staff, you know, polled the board and got their consent before the next meet, but that didn't happen frequently. That was maybe every other year or something like that. I don't know that, maybe there are more grants out there now, but I don't think it'd be a real frequent occurrence. I don't. Yeah, what, I think what brought about the discussion at the Health Board, though, was, Mr. Boone, was when they did their...
Strategic plan?
Yeah, there you go. When they did that, they were asked to give examples of things that were a hindrance to them addressing it, and they were pretty much graded on their strategic plan based on that.
Yeah.
So that would take away from the rating that they got on the strategic plan. So the effort by the Health Board going forward was to remove that obstacle.
Once this agreement is, if we approve this, then will this stay in effect forever, this policy?
That's my, that was my intent, that it would be an ongoing thing. And just to clarify, we will have to take it to the Board of Health for approval, this same request at the April meeting, because it came up in discussion, so we did not have it as an agenda item.
And we still have to vote to accept it.
Right.
So, I mean, let's say, let's say that Susan Johnson is, goes far away, or takes a three-month vacation, and there's an interim director, and they take great liberties and come, and they say, gee whiz, I've got a million-dollar grant, and y'all only have to pony up three-quarters of it. We can always say, okay, yeah, and they can say, I got the grant, well, good, you got the grant, but you're not, you know, you got approval, but...
We just have approval to apply.
They're asking for approval to apply, not to accept.
Right.
If you came back, you know, with a, if I was here long enough, and you came back with a request for medical marijuana for left-handed bohemians, I would probably tell you no.
But right-handed ones are in.
Right.
Ms. Johnson, did you say your board only meets every other month?
Yes, our board meets every other month.
Okay, and we meet twice a month?
Right.
Would it not be better to change their meetings to once a month?
Well, that, we have had some discussion about changing our meetings, but at this point in time, at this point in time...
Yeah, but if you were asking us to do something, then there's no effort being made on the other side.
I hear what you're saying.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just telling you.
I understand what you're saying.
I heard what you said. You said every other month, they met.
Unless things have changed a lot in the last three or four years, normally, there is not enough workload to justify a monthly meetings. And you have professional people who, sometimes difficult for them to get to meetings anyway. And my recollection is the statute only requires quarterly meetings.
Right.
We do it a little more often than the law says. I mean, the board meets more often, they say they have to. And you always can call a special meeting, if need arises.
But it's not been, it's not been the practice for us to call a special meeting just for this kind of thing. We have, in the past, as you said, taken phone calls.
Yeah.
And I understand what you're saying, but I'm not the chairman of our Board of Health.
But you're saying twice a month, what we're meeting now, it's not enough for you to get the information.
Every other month.
Every other month.
No, I'm talking about us, meeting twice a month. It's not enough for them to get the information they need. The impediment was, though, is that they only meet every other month, and so you could have a time lag of, the request came in the day after, and it's gonna be two months before they met again, and I think they said they've actually had instances where they got a grant request, and they had 10 days to turn it in. So they wouldn't meet again, and we wouldn't meet again, so they foregone the opportunity to even apply for those grants.
Have you requested this same permission from your Health Board?
We are going to request it at the April meeting.
Yes.
Yes. We were just trying to go ahead and move forward, and Chairman Johnson, who sits on our Board of Health, recommended that we go ahead and prepare memo and present it to you at the next meeting, that we could get on the agenda, which was tonight, and then we will present it at our Board of Health in April.
Any other questions? If not, floor's open for a motion. I move that we grant the request for an exception to the current policy to allow the Board of Health to apply for grants. We have a motion from Commissioner Boone. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item F is a request from our EMS Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 29, and Susan Blumstein's gonna make that presentation.
Thank you. At our winter planning meeting, David Clower appeared before you. We talked about his multi-year plan to improve the quality of the vehicles that we have in our ambulances. He would like to go ahead and proceed with the remount of two ambulances that he had planned to request funds next year, and at that time, the board said to go ahead and bring, in fact, you made a motion to go ahead and bring a budget amendment for that. Because the way we bid this last summer, we can get two additional ambulance remounts at the same price as we did last summer. As a matter of fact, at the end of a year, we've got an additional year owned to that clause, where the only increase would be the manufacturer's increase in the price. So, but this budget amendment recognizes revenue that we're gonna receive this year in excess of the ambulance fees budgeted, so they can go ahead and get started on those remounts now.
Any questions, Ms. Blumstein? I noticed in the memo that part of the expense was the North Carolina use tax.
Yes, sir.
Are we not exempt from that?
No, sir.
Are we not reimbursed for that?
No, sir. It's not considered a sales tax. It's a use tax for using the roads, and we're not exempt.
It's in effect a sales tax on vehicles.
And, right. One that is non-reimbursable to governmental entities.
Maybe that's something we need to discuss with our general assembly representatives. Okay. Any other questions? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Budget Amendment 29.
We have a motion to approve this request from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item G is a request from the Tax Department for approval of the February refunds and releases, and there are no county commissioners' names on these reports.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve comes from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And H is a request for approval of the...
And H is a request for approval of the March five, two thousand thirteen minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion. Motion to approve by Commissioner Boone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have no announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissioners this evening. Appointments to boards and commissioners, the Central Carolina Economic Development Commissioner Board of Directors, we have one appointment.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Tracy Jackson.
Okay. I would move to close floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Jackson by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come to our attention? Public comment period. Anybody sign up and let them work?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
Okay. New business, someone will recognize Commissioner Griffith first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm on the MumpO Subcommittee. We meet once a month. Our meeting is tomorrow and the topic of the toll lanes has been on the forefront. And we do not have a voice once the issue goes to MumpO because we are not a member. So the only opportunity that we have to give any input is at this Subcommittee level, which we are doing that. But I would like to ask the commissioners to consider a formal statement on the toll lanes in the form of a resolution to submit to MumpO. Since we do not have a voice, I'm not asking for any action. I would just ask you to consider in the next month that we draft a resolution. We did vote unanimously to leave that item, that we did not support the toll lanes out of the plan, the highway plan. And so I would just like for you gentlemen to consider offering a little stronger statement in the form of a resolution just to present to MumpO on behalf of the citizens of Iredell County. And I don't know if Mr. Rakowski wants to add anything. We attend those meetings together, but would just like for you guys to consider that as an option.
I think you summed it up perfectly. I'll answer any questions you might have of me as well.
So if we had a resolution prepared and adopted at our next meeting, that would be an ample time?
It would, yes, sir.
I'm inclined to give a little detail if I could. I think, you know, right now, they're saying in order to fund it, what they were looking to do is do a toll lane that goes from thirty-six all the way into downtown Charlotte. And as someone who drives that in the morning, not all the time, but frequently enough, and I go back and forth to Charlotte in the afternoons sometimes as well, once where the interstate's widened, it's not bad. So instead of, instead of this big humongous project, that toll lanes that start thirty-six and end in downtown Charlotte, I'm just widening the doggone interstate between exit thirty-six and twenty-three, which is where it's only four lanes right now and it's the biggest choke point on the Eastern Seaboard. And I've heard different cost of what it would be to do that, but certainly that was within the realm of realism, I thought. And I find it hard to believe that there's fifteen years' worth of projects that are a higher priority than that simple widening. So what I would offer is that, is that our recommendation isn't just, hey, we're against toll roads, but rather say that what we are in favor of is a general purpose lane, but we understand that it would only be between twenty-three and thirty-six, which...
Are you saying though that they would add only one general purpose lane?
No, no, it's two.
Two going each way?
No, no, it's two. They would add two except over the causeway. I think it narrows down to one at that point.
It would be two northbound lanes and two southbound lanes.
Two additional, I think, until they got to the causeway, and then it goes down to one additional lane in each direction.
Two of this would be eight-lane road total.
I also feel the resolution is important to strengthen our voice on the Subcommittee, which is being drowned out.
No, I agree. I agree. It helps.
I don't want to try and be tactful, but there's just some, there's just some bullies in Charlotte. I mean, I don't know how else to say it, that just want to throw their weight around because they think everybody up here chews tobacco and, you know, we don't have any, we're uneducated hicks. And I just think a resolution would speak very strongly to that, to the Subcommittee, first off, because we have no voice after that. That's it. We do not have a voice past the Subcommittee. And it affects the citizens of Iredell County, so, thank you.
Just for the record, just for the record, one of the former mayors of Charlotte I know used to chew red man tobacco.
Okay.
Because he bought it from me.
You have to tell everything you know, Dave.
Everything I know, so anyway, whatever.
You brought that up. And we said, we're uneducated hicks. We are not uneducated.
This is probably not politically wise, but...
It's hard to resist, isn't it?
That's not going to stop him.
It's time for a little bit of truth on this thing. The reason that I seventy-seven hasn't been widened already is, when they bought the right-of-way for I seventy-seven, they didn't buy enough land. Nobody ever dreamed that Charlotte would be a banking community. They never dreamed that Lake Norman would be a resort community and that people would live on that lake in very expensive homes and drive back and forth to Charlotte. Nobody ever imagined that. And it was believed that I eighty-five from Atlanta all the way up the Eastern Seaboard would be the highway. And folks, there are houses and there's commercial property sitting on the right-of-way that would be necessary for the widening of I seventy-seven, as we sit here this evening. There are utilities in that right-of-way. To merely purchase the right-of-way to widen seventy-seven would be the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars. And it's going to be a long time before they have that money. Now, take me out here and crucify me, but I just told you the truth. And the DOT will not say that publicly, but they will tell you that in private. And I think, you know, I'll take up for them a little bit, the toll lanes, I think, is indicative of the fact that they see the predicament they're in and this is their solution. I'm not sure it's the best solution, but it's the only one practically they feel like they can offer. But that's just the truth of the matter. And nobody's willing to say that, but they, people create these false, these false hopes that if they pitch a big enough fit, it's going to happen. And I just don't see it happening. And now, Mr. Robertson made a good point in Moore's the other night. There has been inequity in the past, the way roads are funded around the state. That's very true. I don't know that if they had been funded more equitably, that there would still be enough money to fund the widening of I seventy-seven to, in the fashion that the folks at that meeting desire. But that's just the truth of the matter.
Well, I would just offer it for consideration.
Right. And I'll vote for a resolution to do it.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
All right.
Okay, so you, Mr. Ruskowski, will have that prepared for us?
We'll work on it.
With Ms. Griffith's review? Okay, thank you. Mr. Boone?
I'd like to bring up a matter that I've given thought to for many years, had been intending to approach the board with this, and I thought tonight might be a good time because we've got an otherwise short agenda. And have a proclamation, a resolution I would like for this board to adopt. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, sir.
I think everybody's gotten, the board members have gotten...
Go ahead and read it if you would, please.
It has to do with limiting debt without the approval of the voters. Whereas politicians temporarily holding elective office should not have the power to endet future generations, except by the express consent of the people. And whereas local government should abide by the spirit of Article Five, Section Four Two of the Constitution of North Carolina, now be it proclaimed that it shall be the policy of the Board of Commissioners that Iredell County shall not incur any future debt unless approved by the qualified voters of the county who vote in a primary or general election, subject to the following exceptions. One would be the refunding or refinancing of existing debt. Two would be debt issued solely to fund the purposes of the Solid Waste Disposal Enterprise Fund, which, add parenthetically, that's paid for by landfill tipping fees, not by tax money. Number three, debt with a term of four years or less. The total outstanding balance of all debts incurred under this exception not to exceed one-tenth of one percent of the assessed value of taxable property in the county. And I'll add parenthetically that that percentage comes out to a little over twenty million dollars. And four, real estate purchase in which the seller has paid an installment of the total purchase price set aside in the Capital Projects Fund or other similar account. And I added that last limitation because it was pointed out to me that occasionally a seller may prefer to be paid an installment for, installments for tax purposes, and that would, you know, allow for that case. Let me just briefly explain why I brought this up. I really, I have a really deep philosophical problem with a board like this indebted future generations. I just don't think that the five of us sitting here or any other group of people who are temporarily serving in office should have the power to endet future generations unless it's with the consent of the people. Our republican form of government, and I say republican with a small r, not being partisan, is supposed to operate under a system of checks and balances that grants government enough power to perform necessary services, yet it restrains government officials from having too much power. One of the checks on government is the holding of frequent elections. In theory, if this board or any other group of officials makes a decision the voters disagree with, the voters can elect a new board at the next election and undo whatever actions they took umbrage at. But if a board approves a large COPS bond issue that people disagree with, they have no remedy. Regardless of who may be elected in the future, the taxpayers will be saddled with the debt for the next twenty or so years. We often hear that one board cannot bind a future board, but in the case of incurring debt, that's not the case. A board can bind a future board. For that reason, one of the checks on government traditionally has been the requirement that debt be incurred only by referendum of the voters. The North Carolina Constitution provides that in Article Five, Section Four, it prohibits state and local governments from borrowing money without the approval of the voters in a referendum, with certain, there are certain limited exceptions, but basically it prohibits that. Many other state constitutions contain a similar provision. Unfortunately, in nineteen ninety-one, the North Carolina Supreme Court, in the case of Wayne County Citizens Association versus Wayne County Board of Commissioners, ruled that state and local governments could approve a COPS bond without voter approvals. They based this decision on the grounds that such devices did not technically obligate the taxpayer, the county. Since that court case, state and local government indebtedness has exploded. I would like to see the state pass legislation, or better yet amend the Constitution to, once again, limit state and government borrowing without consent of the voters, to basically return to something close to the situation before the nineteen ninety-one court case. But in the meantime, this board doesn't have to wait on the state to do the right thing. I'd like to see this board declare our intent to put limits on borrowing. I think the proclamation I just read is a reasonable measure that would give the board the flexibility to incur a limited amount of short-term debt and yet reserve to the voters the power to issue large amounts of long-term debt. Ideally, in an ideal world, I'd prefer that everything be on a pay-as-you-go basis. I'm realistic enough to know that we cannot always do that. And although I never voted for a COPS bond during my previous service on this board, or at least not one for the general fund, I twice voted to put a bond issue on the ballot to let the people decide. And I won't rule out the possibility that I may do so again at some point in the future. But until, but I would be very reluctant to vote for any large COPS bond or any large debt without letting the people first have a chance to vote on it. And until the economy improves and revenues pick up, I'd quite frankly be reluctant to put a bond issue on the ballot. But for those reasons, I would, I would like to see the board adopt this policy. It would just be a policy of the board. I realize that a future board could change that policy. Like I said, I'd rather be bound by state legislation or constitutional amendment, but short of that, I would just like to see a state our intention, and I think, I think this does give the board necessary flexibility, but reserves to the people right to approve a large bond issue. That's closing my comments.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Boone?
I will say this, I think Mr. Boone's proposal, one-tenth of one percent of the total assessed value equates to approximately twenty million dollars.
Twenty million, I think three hundred thousand, something like that. I could change that to twenty million. The reason I use the figures was that a few weeks ago, I was trying to prepare something that would have statewide application to all jurisdictions and that figure seemed to work well. And if people would prefer to just put twenty million in, I have no problem with that.
I'll vote for this resolution, but I would like to have this understanding before the vote is taken. As Mr. Boone, I agree, Mr. Boone, that I do eschew debt as much as possible. Debt limits your options in the future. If you're not careful, it'll make a slave out of you. But there are times when it is prudent for the county to borrow money, and I'm going to give a good example of this. The twenty million dollar limit is adequate for the following reason. I am of the opinion that once the cost of housing prisoners outside of our facility reaches the point, that the expenditure of that money becomes equal or greater than the amount of the debt service on the principal and the interest to borrow the money to buy a jail, we would be foolish to continue to pay rent. It would be like paying rent for a home that exceeds the monthly payment of the home that you could purchase. So for that reason, I'll vote for it, but when I am satisfied that the existing revenue stream is adequate and the cost of housing prisoners outside of our facility equals the amount of that debt service, I will, I will, I will lobby my fellow board members to borrow the money to build a jail. I'm going to be that honest with you, because I think it would be foolish not to at that point.
The approach I take is because the jail would serve the entire county, that is exactly the kind of GO, a bond that would go on a GO ballot. The reason that we would have the option to do COPS is if we needed to do a, primarily for schools, but the scenario that concerns me the most is if we need to buy, build a school, the chances of it passing a GO bond are slim to none. And then, but the way that that's been dealt with in the past is you put a bunch of other stuff on it so that it gets broader base support and you end up building what you need and then some of what, a lot of what you want. And I could support the measure if the limit was up, if the lower limit was up higher enough to where we, if we needed to, we could take care of a school. That's my only objection, is the philosophical part of it, I don't have any problem with it all, I understand that. I think this board historically, I mean, we built schools and the schools are full. Okay, so we built schools and if we hadn't have built the schools, I don't know where the kids would be, but we did it. And I just want to have the flexibility that if we need to build a school, that we don't have to have a big GO bond with a bunch of other stuff to, so that we can build one school. And the COPS gave us that flexibility before, and I would just like to retain that flexibility. So if y'all would be, you know, open to increasing that lower limit from twenty million up to something probably a little bit higher where we could reach it.
How much higher is a little bit higher?
I'll step out of the way and let you two fellows negotiate.
No, I'm, I mean, I would be willing to propose one with a little bit higher limit if it got unanimous vote from the board, but if we go too high...
They've got the property on Overcash Road already borrowed, I mean, already owned. owned, so we would just have to do the building and stuff, so I'm thinking probably closer to, probably thirty million.
A total limit of thirty million? I'll amend it to thirty million if that'll get unanimous vote, I'm willing to do that. I'm, you know, I, I would have...
Yeah, I can live with that.
Okay, I'll vote for it if...
Well, I, I will, I will amend my motion to make the limit, just say thirty million and leave the percentage out.
Because that's really the next biggie that we're going to have to probably build as a high school.
I'm not promising that I would necessarily vote for the, the COPS bond, but I'm willing to, you know.
Understand, let, let me, so that our clerk can understand, the motion has been amended to remove the percentage of the total valuation of the, the property in the county, and you've put a dollar limit of thirty million dollars. Okay. All right, that's the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Isn't that being a percent? Yep.
Well, this short meeting's turned out not to be so short. I have a, a matter of concern that I'd like to address this evening, and I have some prepared comments. We are now in the fifth year of either a recessionary environment or slow economic growth. Tonight, I've been, well, in the past, I've been reluctant to make economic forecasts, but I'm going to make one tonight. Tonight, I predict these condition, conditions will persist for at least the next three to four years, unless there's a significant change in fiscal policy. There are two philosophies in contention at the present time. One argues for economic growth and the other for economic equality. In my opinion, the greatest fallacy ever advanced in economic thought is that an economy is a zero-sum game. People who believe this, people who believe this erroneously think that if someone prospers, they necessar- necessarily do so at the expense of someone else. They have, in fact, in my humble opinion, idealized the enemy. Adam Smith disproved this philosophy, brought an end to mercantilism, just brought about the blessings of free markets resulting in prosperity to the masses which beforehand was unimagined. Today, however, enough of our leaders, and apparently enough of the electorate, believe that some, that if some are more prosperous than others, an injustice has occurred which must be remedied. They have won the short-term argument, they have raised taxes, and now they call for more. Strictly spending coupled with an accommodative monetary policy has produced huge deficits accompanied by one asset bubble after another, rather than consistent economic growth based on a sound monetary policy. Any change in these policies for a pro-economic growth plan accompanied by this fiscal policy is not foreseeable. This brings us to the sequester. Spending is not being cut, the rate of increase is being reduced. The federal government will spend more money this year than last, and more next year than this year. Some locally appointed and elected officials are mimicking President Chicken Little, wringing their hands and announcing a coming disaster. However, absent the miraculous elixir of economic growth, we're stuck with a local economy that will not produce the revenues that many demand. Our December sales tax revenues were down by more than two percent compared to the previous year. Property tax revenues will probably come in at about, if not a little under, two percent increase, the result being that the county will have very little new discretionary revenue in the forthcoming year. In two thousand and eleven, with spending have been reduced over the pre- previous three years, a total of eighteen million dollars since the economic decline had ensued, and revenues from the property tax increase set to fall by another approximately five million, I voted to raise the tax rate more than the revenue neutral, being totally honest about that, because no one knew how long the stagnation would continue and whether or not it would get worse. It hasn't gotten much better, and I am fearful that it could be about to get worse. The school board has asked for an additional six million dollars, more than they are receiving currently. This is impossible for me to support. In fact, given the state of the county's revenues and what we, what I personally believe will be little if any growth in revenues for the foreseeable future, I believe that we will do well to maintain school funding at its present level in the forthcoming budget for the following reasons. Sales tax revenues will continue to suffer as a result of the payroll tax increase recently enacted and higher fuel prices. Although crude prices have not been rising, in fact, they've fallen a bit, however, refineries are now forced to buy ethanol credits because we're not burning as much gas as before, but they must buy the amount of pre-prescribed units of ethanol, and having to factor this in the price of gasoline, it will make lower fuel costs harder to achieve in the future. Personal property commercial tax revenues will continue to stagnate and see, if anything, only a marginal improvement resulting from the lack of confidence and inefficient, insufficient capital investment. Real estate tax revenues will continue to rise only modestly. An accommodative monetary policy by the Federal Reserve will continue to keep interest rates low. These artificially low interest rates distort the allocation of capital, and over time has produced asset bubbles. The tech bubble and the housing bubble are two of them. There may be another bubble coming, no one is sure. If it is, it most assuredly will affect the price of bonds. This will be detrimental to long-term growth. Two years ago, I warned local officials that appeared before us that the stimulus money that they were seeking and the jobs program money that they were seeking to gain was only a temporary fix, and that if the economy did not improve over time, they would have spent that money and they would be in the same financial condition that they were at the time they set the force. Two years have passed, the stimulus money is gone, and we are right back where we were. It is the old saying of Winston Churchill, he says, "You cannot stand in the middle of a bucket, grab itself by the handles, and pick yourself up." But yes, that is what they tried to do, following the example of Lord Maynard Keynes. Well, folks, wealth is only crea- is only created by free people and free markets, it is never created by the government. Early in two thousand and nine, in Mooresville, I made the prediction that the stimulus would not work, it would not contribute to protracted economic growth, and some people tried to run me out of the place. I will depart from my traditional magnanimity and say, "I told you so." The, the change in prescription for this economy, the prescription has run out, and the doctor is not going to renew the prescription, but the pain is still there. The only answer to our problems is a pro-economic growth strategy, and there is none on the horizon. Therefore, I will say this. It is my desire to instruct the county manager and the county finance director to present us a school budget that will maintain the per-pupil expenditure that we are giving them in this budget year. If in their experienced opinion, revenues will allow it, I want them to have the freedom to recommend that they would fund any additional students at the current level of funding for schools. I say this, I, I can see the letters in the paper to now, that old child, Heaton Johnson, is back at it again. But folks, as a county commissioner, you live at an intersection in life, and on the cross street are the needs, the desires, and the wishes of one group of people, and the main drive, the main lane that that road crosses over is financial reality, and we have the unindivisible position of directing traffic. And this time, because of a deteriorating economy, we have been unable to direct traffic adequately, and there has been a wreck, and those two worldviews have collided. And someone must demonstrate leadership, in my opinion, because we will simply not have the revenue growth to do what we've been doing. I, I am very jealous of the fund balance that we have, and because no one can sit here and tell me how long this economic sta- stagnation will end, then I, that would be my direction to the staff to maintain per-pupil expenditures at its current level. And if they feel satisfied that they cannot use, will not have to use fund balance and can fund the additional units, uh, children at the existing level of funding, they should feel free to make that recommendation, and I would like to place that in the form of
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Is, is that just for, for a starting point, you mean? I mean, I mean, we're still early in putting the budget together. If you're saying we're going to, that they, that they fund the education, the exactly the dollar amount that we did last year, or the same per pupil?
Per pupil. Unless they are comfortable that there will be sufficient revenues when they get all the numbers in, that they will be able to fund the additional students who come into the system at the present rate we're funding per pupil now. In other words, if there's one person in a school building and they're getting one dollar, and another one shows up and they have two dollars, they would fund the second one at a dollar, so the expenditures will go from one dollar to two dollars. If they do not feel that the revenue will support it, the school system will simply have to accept those children without counting on any revenues. I, I do not think that we're going to have a whole lot of money coming in, guys. I really don't.
As I understand it, your motion is to keep the total dollar amount the same unless the staff think there's a sufficient revenue...
That, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
That's what it would equal to.
To keep the per pupil amount the same, okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify.
I, I'll vote for it if, if we, if it's the per pupil, keep it the same, but if, I mean, if they get four hundred more kids and...
I think Mooresville was predicting about two hundred more, and Ardele Estates was going to be about the same. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
But even, even if Mooresville gets two hundred more students, I will not vote to appropriate money out of the existing fund balance to fund it. I will not do it. I caught the devil for building that fund balance, and I'll be damned if I'm going to vote to give it away, because nobody can sit here and tell me where the bottom is, and the people in Washington do not know what they're doing. You can go to any school in this state and you take the first class in Economics 101, and they will tell you, "You never raised taxes in the middle of a recession." My heaven sakes, there's nineteen-year-old kids in this stoke, no better than that, and the people running this country don't have that much sense. I'm not in Congress, forgive me, I get a little excited, but...
(laughing).
A pack of fools.
Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm, so is the motion that you're going to, is that you're directing them to give the same dollar amount total, or the same dollar amount per pupil? Because if it's per pupil, then it says that, and I, I think you're, you're, we're not voting on the budget tonight, you're just voting on the guidance of where they should start.
I think we've been, up to this point, honestly, I think we've been unfair to the staff, because they, they read the request in the budget. I don't think we've been specific enough of these folks that they've got enough direction to prepare a budget to come back to us.
Okay.
And they're going to prepare a budget with a whole lot of guesswork in it, they're going to come back to us, and there's no sense in us sitting here embarrassing them and cutting that thing to shreds if it's something we're not going to vote for. What I'm saying is, if, if the same number of students show up next year as showed up this year, they'll get the same amount of money.
Okay.
All right, if revenue projections, if, if the staff feels like they haven't, will have enough money, and I think they will, and if we have enough additional revenue to come in, that we can fund the additional students on top of what they're receiving now, and those students will be funded at the current per pupil rate, then I will vote for that. But if the money's not there, I will not vote to take money out of the fund balance to pay for it.
Then you will have to adjust the per pupil spending, correct?
That's right.
It will have to be lowered.
Okay, all right, so you're giving them latitude that if...
Right.
If it looks like the money's coming back in, we can fund it on the per pupil basis to, in, in that account for the growth.
Right.
I mean, if you get more, if they have more kids, they're going to have more expenses.
If, if, if you do it any other way, you're going to wind up doing two things, you're going to have to raise the tax rate, or you're going to have to spend fund balance.
Or cut something off.
Or cut something off. And I'm, I'm just telling them, "Don't be mad, because I'm just going to do what I said I was going to do, and I'm not spending fund balance." Okay? All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, I believe that's all we got, isn't it, except for a closed session? I'm sorry, got to give our county manager an opportunity to share with us. Do you have anything, Mr. Smith?
Uh, no, sir, only under closed session.
Okay, I would move we go into closed session under General Statute 143, 318, 1186. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?[1615.51]
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.